Good evening. Welcome to the Norwood Planning Board Meeting. We are doing a remote access digital meeting. We are in various locations here in town. And this is our scheduled meeting for January the 11th, 2021. The hour of 7 o'clock is upon us. And we will start the meeting off with the agenda item. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the 12:21 meeting. Everybody had a chance to review them. Any comments, any questions? Mr. Hatchey?
No comments or questions.
Okay, Mr. Bamber?
No comments, no questions.
Okay. All right, if that's the case, I'd like a motion to accept the minutes as filed.
Motion to approve.
A second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Proposed unanimous. Okay, for the roll, Mr. Hatchey?
Aye.
Mr. Bamber?
Aye.
Mr. Ernest Patracowski?
Aye.
And the chairman is an aye, 4-0. Hour of 7:05, we have a public hearing for a special permit application for internally illuminated signage in the Central Business District. Bank of America at 699 Washington Street. Heather Dudko, I'm sign permit consultant. Are you out there?
I'm here.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. We have an application before us for some signs. Patrick, you want to bring us up to date on that, please?
Yeah, I'm just going to open up to the sign application in one moment. All right. So I just want to draw the board's attention to the current wall sign at 699 Washington Street. The existing sign itself is a static sign. It's not illuminated at about nine square feet. And that's just, it's the channel letter sign. So it's not so much a background as is the mounted letters themselves. The proposed sign, traditional Bank of America logo, blue back to blue with the red emblem, our red logo. The proposal is to have this be illuminated channel lettering coming in around 18 square feet in total area. That is compliant with our section 6.2.16.2 for a primary wall sign to be under 30 square feet. That's where we stand with this sign. The other sign, and I wanted to kind of talk about this just briefly, is the pylon sign. The pylon sign itself is also proposed to be illuminated. However, this was a mistake by myself, just kind of a little bit of discussion with the building commissioner about what constitutes kind of a grandfathering. So the sign itself would be taking the position of a pylon sign that had knocked down due storms. However, with it being a new sign itself, it needs to comply with our existing bylaw, which is leaving 6.2.16.2 for standing signs. So that requires the sign itself within the business district, such as the Central Business District, to be no more than 50 square feet, as well as being 15 feet from a property line. However, you can be up 5 feet from a property line, but it has to be reduced by two square feet for each foot. It gets to that five-foot minimum, or that five-foot max, however you want to word it. So what was proposed, and what I talked to Dudko about, is would not be compliant with our current bylaws. And so she's aware of that, and that's something that may need to be revised. But beyond that, I myself probably advertised this as a separate public hearing. And that's a mistake that I think I made in the public hearing notice, where it is an internally illuminated sign, but being that is a standing sign, it is also something that needs to be determined by a special permit. Would you be the special permit granting authority? That would fall to the planning board to decide. So that's just something I wanted to kind of clarify with the pylon sign itself. But the existing wall sign, which is internally illuminated, was advertised correctly and can be up for discussion.
Patrick, thank you. Now, a second point to Patrick's comments on the pylon sign is the internal illumination. One of the things that we've been kicking around here, and we've had a long struggle to get it changed for not internally illuminated. And I'd like to see some design showing something less than an internally illuminated design, if you want to put that in your package of things you need to do in order to get the board to really be happy with the bank. We'd love to have the bank here in town. It's not the point, and we're willing to work with you. But it's something we're looking to get in compliance. It took a number of years to finally get that in compliance. So we would like to get that installed, especially in the Central Business District, where we're looking to do a lot of changes in that area. All right, Heather?
Yes, so are you addressing just the pylon or the wall sign as well?
The wall signs are fine. Patrick was satisfied with that, meets all the dimensions, so we don't have an issue with that at all.
So Mr. Porro, so that is also internally illuminated too? Just want to be clear. The wall sign?
The wall sign, yes.
Both of them are being internally illuminated.
Oh, excuse me. Mr. Patracowski? Ernie?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I do have a question on the wall signs, on the internally. Just to clarify, their letters, right, Bank of America, so it's just the letters that are internally lit? It's not a, it's not a full internally lit panel? Am I correct?
That's correct.
It's just the letters?
Yes.
So if you look at it, you're going to see Bank of America lit up, but that's all you're going to see lit up is the letters, B-A-N-K, et cetera, right?
That's correct. They're individually mounted channel letters, and the logo is a separately mounted logo. So you're correct. It's not on a panel. It's not a box sign. It's individually mounted letters.
So just each letter is internally lit, not a, it's not a big billboard?
Correct. So just the face of each letter is lit. The light will come through the face of each letter.
All right, I'm okay. That, thank you. That clears it up for me. That's, I don't, I didn't want to see a panel up there. Thank you.
No.
But that pylon sign would have that panel lit, correct?
Yep. So to talk about the pylon sign a little bit, Pat and I did have a long discussion, and I do fully understand the ground sign was damaged and it was removed. And by removing it, it's no longer grandfathered, so that they will need to comply with the regulations. I have not spoken to the sign installer about the revisions that we need. I need to confirm the setback so that I can direct them to the size, the square footage that they'd be allowed based on the setback. So at this point, we'd have to come back with a revision for that anyway. So I think Pat's dilemma with the advertising of the special permit for the actual structure of the ground sign, we're okay with that because we're going to need to come back with the revision. I haven't, I haven't been able to finalize that yet. The internal, just so the board knows, the internal illumination on the ground signs, they have an aluminum face, and they route out the lettering. So just the illumination would come through the lettering on the sign face of the ground sign. So it's not a full facelit panel, Lexian panel. It'll be an aluminum face with the lettering illuminated.
Okay.
But as I said, we're going to need to come back with a revision for that sign anyway. So I don't know, I don't know what they'll do, actually. I don't know if they'll propose the same style, if they need to, based on the setback, if they need to reduce the size compared, you know, a lot, they might come back with a different design. So I think that the freestanding should, we should just maybe discuss that at the next meeting.
Yep, fine. I'm good with that. Heather, do you need the other stuff done before the other pylon sign comes in separately? Or can, can you wait? Get away, or do you want to get that pushed through?
Oh, for the wall sign? Actually, I'd like to, if we can get a decision on that tonight, that would be great.
Okay. Yep, we'll try to do that.
Okay. Sometimes when they, when they need to go back to the bank with revisions, it takes months. And I don't, I don't know, you know, I don't know. With everything going on, I have no idea how long it will take. So if they could just move forward with the wall sign, that would probably make more sense.
Okay, Mr. Patracowski?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I know we're not discussing the pylon sign tonight, but Heather, if you could, when you talk to your sign people and talk to the bank, you know, what we're trying to eliminate on this pylon sign is to drive down Washington Street and see a lit up billboard. It's a beautiful building. You know, we don't allow these, I mean, there aren't a lot of pylon signs on the sidewalk in downtown. We're slowly trying to, you know, make it look a little more eye appealing. And I understand it's the bank, and you want people to know it's there. But if they, you know, come up with something where something had a couple of goose neck lights on it, shining down on the sign, or, you know, obviously, I don't think anybody wants to increase what's allowed by zoning, because, you know, personally, just myself, I don't want to drive downtown and see this lit up billboard. And, you know, maybe come up with some goose necks. I know it's a little bit different, and it's a little, you know, more dull as maybe. But, you know, I think that's what we're going for. And it's such a beautiful building, you know, you know, that's the, those first bank in Norwood, you know, right there.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Mason, you're muted.
Yeah, hi. I'm just wondering, the next time when you present, is it possible to have a rendering of what the sign looks like illuminated?
Yes, I mean, I'm thinking that they might have a couple of options at this point, because I'm getting the feeling that a full internally illuminated ground sign would not be supported. So if I give them that feedback, and based on what they'll need to do for size reduction based on the setback, I think that they'll have a couple of options. So, I mean, they have done goose neck, they can do an external light bar that comes down from the top. I mean, there are external illumination options. So, and they can also show you a night rendering of it internally illuminated and how it would look with the routed. So you'd have some, some things to consider.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments from anybody else? Yes, Mr. Hatchey?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Forgive me, I may not be reading this correctly, but with regard to the wall sign, am I, am I understanding that nighttime illumination is the color, it's white? Can you just explain, reading this, or is it, the nighttime illumination is white LED behind the colored lenses, and it would, you'd see blue letters?
You'd see blue letters. It's the white LED behind the letters.
Yeah, I just, I'm reading, just making sure what's written here. Allegation night, white LED. I want to make sure it didn't shine white during, you know, during night hours.
It's backlit, right?
I'm sorry?
If they're backlit?
Yep.
Behind the letters, it's lit, so it's shine?
No, no, no. The illumination is within the cabinet, so the face is light.
Okay.
It's an aluminum, they're made, they built an aluminum cabinet, and then they have an acrylic face. The light component is inside the cabinet, and the face lights.
Got it.
You're good, Brian?
Yes, I'm fine, thank you.
Oh, how do we segregate this in order to get the approval on the face, the signs on the wall?
I think the board can just make a motion to approve that specific sign and take no action on the freestanding sign.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Shane?
Would Mr. Mason be voting tonight, considering Mr. Sheehan is not available? And it's a special permit?
Yes, he would be.
All right, so, Mr. Mason, your associate member, so just.
So he gets three votes? No, I'm only kidding. Okay. Can I get a motion, please? Anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the wall sign and take no action on the pylon.
May I get a second?
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous for the roll. Mr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Bamber?
Aye.
Patracowski?
Aye.
Hatchey?
Aye.
And the chairman is an aye, 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll see you next, we'll see you next meeting.
I'll be back tomorrow, Heather, just to discuss.
Sure, no problem. Okay, thanks, Pat. Thank you, good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Next item on the agenda. Joe Collins, are you available? Okay. Presentation on the Route 1 Economic Impact Study. Joe Collins?
Thank you, members of the planning board. Pat, could you make me the? Okay, thank you, members of the planning board. This has been a lengthy study, started back in, I believe, August or September of 2019. Wasn't just me, you've got a lot of help from members of staff, including Pat and Paul. In fact, the image on the cover of the PowerPoint slide was created by Pat, so thank you very much, Pat. There's quite a few slides on the presentation, but I'm going to skip most of them. And if there are any questions, I can go back and begin reviewing them further. So the purpose of the, of this study was to develop an inventory of all of the businesses on the Route 1 corridor, to understand the financial impact of all of the businesses and some of the homes on the Round Corridor, on the town's overall revenue, towns' revenues, and try to figure out if certain sectors generate more utility tax revenue than other sectors. And I did, basically, this, this study has three analyses. One, one of them was looking at the overall impact of the town, after time, versus overall, and then just broadly, business types, what type of impact they have versus other business types. Methodology, so we used all of the taxes that the town levies on businesses. All data was derived from FY19. Did this by parcel, which means some of the, some of the parcels will have multiple businesses in each parcel. Categories for analysis, I mentioned this a little bit earlier, trade first, local and land use and land use business type. Also broke it up into each section, so I compared, looking at all types of payments that businesses may make to the town, including utilities. And then I also took utilities out and just looked at real estate, property tax, personal property taxes, and user fees. So here's the, my study area. I used a comparing, in comparison to the Pat and Paul and the planning board's rezoning efforts, I used a narrower definition of Route 1. Essentially, it's parcels that are touching Route 1 or are, or essentially very close, or the Vanderbilt Parkway, I'm sorry, Vanderbilt Corridor, which you cannot access without using Route 1. And here's the northern half of the study area. So the traded sector, this theory is, it's basically any type of business that manufactures some type of product or sells their services to firms or individuals outside of the area. So automobile manufacturer is a great example. It's not, somebody who's making cars, they're not going to sell the automobiles to only people within, let's say, Norwood. They're going to sell them to people over the country and perhaps all over the world, and that the money that they make will actually come back and will help, or that the wealth will, will generate. The community that's actually making the automobiles will generate some wealth and paying employees a good wage, paying quite a bit in property taxes, utility fees, things like that. A local sector firm would be one described as perhaps like a restaurant, a barber shop, something that's actually benefiting from the traded sector firms that are in the area. And also, because certain parcels have local and traded sector businesses, I basically had to make up a third type of sector, which I refer to as mixed, which basically those sectors, or I'm sorry, those parcels include traded and local sector firms. There we go. So the other study area I used business type versus land use business type, essentially made up those terms. I used what are called NICS codes, North American Industrial Code System. It's the code system, it's between two and six-digit numbers that the federal government came up with to try to organize and analyze different types of businesses. Some of these include, I'm sorry. The business type, I found about 21 different types on the Route 1 corridor. That was a little, 21 is a little bit too big of a number to complete any type of meaningful analysis, so I had to combine some of them. So I came up with a land use business type, which is basically those 21 types of businesses condensed into 10 types of, 10 different variables. Here's my hypothesis. It's a hypothesis that statistically significant relationship exists between sector types, local sector and mixed, and also between the various business types. Townwide, it was being very clear that the Route 1 corridor plays a significant role in the town's overall finances. The Round Corridors, you can tell, as you can see, encompasses about 12% of the land area of the town, but contributes roughly 18 and a half percent of the town's total real estate tax levy. That was 2019. And also 27% of the total water and sewer payments to the town. So the Route 1 corridor in aggregate keeps real estate taxes and utility rates low for the rest of town. Without the Route 1 corridor, the town in Norwood would be forced to either reduce its service level or increase real estate taxes for the rest of the community, and also utility So in looking at local and traded, and also comparing the business types, I used descriptive statistics and inferential statistics. Descriptive are pretty simple. Basically, they're describing the data from the present or the past. Although their descriptive statistics are, they're valuable, but they can't really tell us what the future might hold for us, and also they can't tell us definitively if there's an actual relationship. As reinferential statistics come in, they do a good job of telling us, when we think that there's a relationship, when we're looking at the, the results of descriptive statistics, they can tell us that there's actually a relationship there, and they can also give us a good idea of what we can expect in the future. These next few slides, I'll go through rather quickly, but if anyone has any questions or would like to look at something further, just let me know. Okay. So in looking at the traded and local sector analysis, specifically descriptive, it was found that the parcels sector type affects the amount of revenue the town generates. These descriptive analysis clearly show that in 2019, parcels containing trade sector businesses generated much more revenue than parcels categorized as, as local sector. And here's, this table displays the mean difference and also median difference. So in the top half of that table, traded sector minus local sector, the mean difference, so the trade sector mean subtract, minus the local sector mean, mean difference of about $172,000. And that's not including utilities. We include utilities, those numbers increase significantly.
Joe, can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, absolutely.
The traded sector, I don't know if you, if we went through those slides. So if you were looking at an auto dealership, which is, you know, a considerable part of Route 1, that's a traded sector, right?
That's local.
That's local?
Yeah.
And maybe I, maybe I'm missing the, the difference, real quick, the difference. The traded is more manufacturing?
Yeah, it can be. That's, that's the common definition you typically will see with, with traded sector, but it could also be a firm that's perhaps selling its services, particularly to people outside of the region. So that would be the best way to describe it. A traded sector is someone who sells its, it'd be a business that sells its products or services to people or other firms outside of the region. So Modern is another really great example, now they're manufacturing the COVID-19 vaccine in Norwood, and they're shipping it all over the world. And those, that money is actually going to come back to Norwood and also Cambridge, and it's going to generate wealth for these two communities.
So on Route 1, an example would be the Meatball Factory?
Exactly, yeah.
Which is a, you know, it's, a lot of people, well, people know it's there, but it's a big, it's a big nut. So that would be a traded, in the traded sector. But the auto dealerships sell basically locally?
Right. So they're not really, I guess perhaps if we were the only place in the Northeast that sold automobiles?
Right, exactly.
Yeah. But in a lot of ways, they're kind of just like a retail store. They just happen to sell something that's, you know, big, and usually the salespeople will make a little bit more money. Yeah, we'll actually dive into that a little bit later when we move into the business types. Yeah, Ernie, I'm glad you brought that up too, because the Home Market Foods actually generates, in 2019, generated more money for the town than any other, well, parcel. I think it was close to 3 million?
What was that again, please, Joe?
Actually, I have the number right in front of me, so let me. Home Market Foods, which is the Meatball Factory?
Okay.
They generated more revenue for the town than any other, well, I guess I could say business too, but if all the parcels on the Route 1 corridor, they, that parcel generated more money for the town than any other parcel. Well, I guess I could say business too, but if all the parcels on the Rowan Corridor, they, that parcel generated more money for the town than any other parcel. That was three points, three million, six hundred seventy five thousand dollars.
So that's not all in real estate tax though.
Nope, that is uh, they really pay a lot. Actually, in utilities alone, they pay about three point three million. Alright, any other questions before I move on? So here's the inferential um analysis for uh, the traded in the local sector analysis. Uh, I used a T-test. And when doing this, in order to figure out there's a statistically significant relationship. Um, you generate a P-value, which you can see right here, it's actually the two green squares, zero point zero zero. Um, the P-values basically a sliding scale. Um, the closer to zero, the more certain you are that there's a. Relationship closer to one, the more certain you can be that there's no relationship at all. Um, the significant level for this study was point zero five, which is pretty common in the social sciences. Um, which would, if it were happen to be, if the P-value did happen to be point zero five, it would tell us we're ninety five percent certain that there's a relationship. In this case, there's actually a P-value zero when we're comparing the. Traded sector mean and the local sector mean when utilities are included and when they're not included. So we can say that we are a hundred percent certain. That there's a statist- statistically significant relationship between the traded sector and the local sector. Uh, when we include all of the different types of taxes and utility fees that we charge businesses. And when uh, we're only looking at uh, personal property taxes. Um, hotel motel taxes, meals tax, things like, basically everything but utilities. And I apologize, it's a little bit, PowerPoint is a little bit slow tonight. So the, basically the second half of the study was looking at the ten different types of. The land use business type categories that I created, which is auto, which is primarily um, auto dealers, but also includes. Uh, some uh, mechanics. Also hotels, uh, life sciences. I mentioned hotels only because uh. Four points was actually put in the multiple business types, because that parcel also includes FM Global. So we have hotels, only life sciences, local service sector, uh, which includes pharmacies, restaurants. Uh, retail, lot of what you would expect to see actually in the, the local sector, which we discussed earlier. Need manufacturing, multiple business sites, which um, similar when we were talking about earlier, when we were talking about the. Mixed that I included with trade and local, there's just some parcels have far too many different business types, so we had to create the multiple business type class. Uh, professional services, which uh, includes a lot of law firms and also engineering firms. Residential and then undevelopment or undeveloped or government owned, which actually there's just quite a bit of undeveloped. And um, government owned land on the Rowan Corridor. And I'll touch on a couple of these. Um, total acreage, it's, I think this is a pretty interesting. Figure. Um, oil consumes about seventeen percent of the land area on the Rowan Corridor. Um, hotels, um, definitely one you want to pay attention to. Uh, there are. This acres, yeah, so there consumes about two percent of the total land area. Life sciences, another two percent, uh, manufacturing, ten percent. Welcome back to this one. Here's the mean and median um, for all of the different classes, um, excluding utilities. And. Somewhat interesting hotels definitely dominating this. Um, life science is quite high and so is manufacturing. And when we include utilities, you can tell um, who the big users are in town manufacturing averages. Uh, one point one million dollars in total uh, payments to the town. Life science is quite high. Uh, hotels again, very high out with the median with an average of nine hundred thirty four thousand dollars. Okay, so overall, we found that the land use business type class affects the amount of revenue the town generates. Um, these descriptive analyses show that some classes generate quite a bit more revenue than others, particularly. Hotels, life sciences and manufacturing. Um, rather than comparing or finding the mean difference and meeting median difference for every single class, which would have been um, would take up a lot of space. Oh, sorry. Um, I compared hotels, life sciences and manufacturing to a few different of the class, including auto. To show what the mean difference and median differences, uh, when we include utilities and when we don't. And um. I think the script analysis show that uh, hotels, life sciences and manufacturing are definitely generating much more revenue. And other business types. So in order to complete the inferential analysis for when comparing land use business types. Um, the T-test is going to be a little bit more cumbersome as that typically only compares two different variables. Because we had ten different uh, business type classes I do something a little different called the. Find the full name here, actually. Enova with Tukey's postdoc, which is uh, in order to. Do this, you have to do it in Enova, which is similar to a T-test, but instead of doing an, an analysis of two variables. You can do multiple and it compares the entire group to turn it, there's something, there's statistical relationship. Um, in this case, we found that there was, we got a P-value zero. That told us that there was at least one statistically significant relationship, relationship between um. Two of the ten uh, land use business types. And to make this a little bit easier for everyone to read. Um, I color coded it and also just showed each land use business type and which um, businesses it has a. Statistically real significant relationship uh, positively and negatively. So in this case, for example, auto has a statistically significant relationship, meaning a much larger average mean than undeveloped or government owned. Uh, not terribly surprising considering um, they're not undeveloped or government owned. Technic- I mean, they really don't have anything on them or really, you know, generate any wealth for anyone. Also has a negative statistically significant relationship with hotels. And we look at hotels. It has a positive statistically significant relationship with auto, meaning its mean difference is quite a bit larger than auto. No, I should add also that this, this first half does not include utilities. And the next couple of slides will show, once again, we have a P-value with zero when we include utility payments. And there's a few more, uh, definitely a few changes. Um, auto has a, has two statistically significant relationships. In this case, uh, both of them are negative hotels and manufacturing. Um, as you can tell, manufacturing hotels have statistically significant relationships with multiple different types of classes. And here's a similar table which I showed um. Which I showed earlier. Any questions so far? So this is the one thing I should point out with life sciences. Um. Do they actually, um, that business type does not have a statistically significant relationship with. Any of the other business types. And I included this slide to show that it still does have a significant. Um, mean difference and meeting difference comparing some other types of businesses like auto and multiple business types. Uh, when utilities included and when they're not. Uh, one of the challenges with this, we only have about, I think, seven. Parcels that are considered life science, maybe fewer than that. So the sample size is quite small and that can sometimes affect uh, inferential analysis like uh, nobody with two piece postdoc. So there are certainly some limitations with this study. So I only analyzed um, revenue that was actually generated from. The Rowan Quarter. I did not look at expenditures. So we did, I did not look whatsoever at. For example, how many calls per service a certain type of business might expect from the police department. Um. How often we may need to repave certain roads and let's say the Vanderbilt Corridor, things like that. Uh, also due to, primarily due to time constraints, it was very, and. Time constraints and also the complexity of it, obtaining salary data. From, you know, even just a business type like, let's say, auto sales versus hotels and life sciences was. Uh, very challenging and with the time commitment required to complete the study itself, it just wasn't going to be able to. I wasn't going to be able to complete this within a reasonable time, reasonable amount of time. Also, the town does not directly collect room occupancy excise tax or uh, or meals excise tax. And uh, the division of local services was also unwilling to give me um, data from individual businesses. So I had to do with um, meal tax, I took the. Total amount of revenue that we generated in twenty nineteen and had to divide that by the number of convicular licenses we had. And contributed that to each restaurant on Route one. Wasn't perfect, but I think it was the best option we had. Uh, hotel motel tax, that was a little bit better considering all of the hotels are actually on the Rowan Corridor. So in, actually in conversation with Paul Halkiotis, he came up with the idea of uh, basically dividing the total amount of. Revenue by the number of hotel rooms and providing the revenue by hotel room to each hotel. So I think that worked pretty well. It wasn't perfect. Uh, would have been better if we had actual figures, but. It worked pretty well. Um, if you haven't reviewed, I included quite a few uh. The appendices in the study is quite long, including, actually has a full list. Of uh, this parcel on Route one and total revenue generated by each parcel. Um, also appendix A includes. A list of some really fascinating businesses that are located on Route one, primarily manufacturing innovation like sciences. The one problem with the site like this is it's very challenging to uh, you have to aggregate basically everything to try to make sense of the entire quarter. So it's sometimes it's challenging, you, you basically lose um, showcasing some of the really fascinating. Um, businesses that aren't one. I encourage all of you to take a look at appendix A. Um, I also, in the P Q, received a PDF and was. Included links to just about the website of just about every business. Really excited to see what's going on in Route one.
Joe, going to that meals tax and ex, and hotel tax slide you just had up there. Um, is such an interesting, so when you, when you rent the room, you know, get a room at the Four Point Sheraton. And you pay the local, is there a state tax as well? Or is all the uh, I'm sorry, what?
Yeah, there's a uh, state tax too.
And so there's this, the state gets a piece of the pie and then the town gets a piece of the pie when you rent the room, right?
Yeah, I think we're six percent.
They collected, but they, it all goes to the state first and then it comes back to the town. Is that?
Basically would write one check to the state and then the state sends money back to us, whatever um. Whatever that percentage is.
And the meals tax, same thing, huh?
Yes.
Interesting.
Tax or any, for the local meals tax, it's point seven five cents, percent rather, seven point seven five percent. So it's three quarters of one percent on the meals tax add on. Cents to the Commonwealth. They disperse it back to the, the town of Norwood.
Yeah, is that, so do they give you back every, every dollar put in comes back? Or do they, you know, is that pooled and then, you know?
No, it's everything that's collected is uh, remitted to the town.
So the more restaurants you have, the, you know, the more, obviously the more meals tax, you're going to generate and get it back.
Correct.
Okay.
And it's very similar, very similar with the room occupancy tax. They, they collect that, that, it is capped at a total of ten percent. The, the Commonwealth is at six point something and the towns have the ability to add. Up to three percent or three point some percent to get it to the ten percent.
Thank you.
Alright, any other questions? Okay, so in conclusion, the Rowan Corridor is uh, it's critical to town's tax base. Um, the quarter's most valuable resources actually uh, land. And it's not quite utilized as well, but it could be. Uh, I think, well, actually the, the precursor for the, for this study was really looking at um. The auto sales industry. And I think that um, the study shows that there's some other industries that generate, that could be a better use of. Our scarce resource on Route one, which is land. Uh, businesses included in the local service sector, for example, um. Businesses in the local service sector and auto class assume about forty three percent of the land area of the corridor. Um, but don't generate quite a bit as, don't generate as much money as other business types like manufacturing. Or life sciences. So we had a couple of recommendations, um, primarily trying to retain. And expand the trade sector industries that are already on the Rowan Corridor. Uh, we don't have, you know, a mass, we don't have a ton of power to, you know, choose what type of. Businesses are on our corner, but we do have some tools like zoning, uh, various policies, bylaws, economic development resources. Uh, to try to attract and retain um, trade sector industries that are there. Um, and also local sector industries that we want to, to help, you know, create a, a sense of place. Alright, any questions?
Joe, I would just like to thank you because that's, this report is quite comprehensive. If you take the time to, to really drill down on some of these areas, you find it very interesting. What you believed about the town is a lot different from what the facts really are. And uh, this, this brought a lot of that to light, in my opinion.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. And um, if anybody has any questions later on, if you, if you're reading it and um. Think of something else to ask, please feel free to email me or give me a call.
Thank you. Anybody else have a question at this time for Joe?
Joe, I guess.
I and uh, have a cocktail.
No. Joe, what about the, the real like correlation between, say, like. Like so, uh, salary businesses like restaurants, you know, it used to be, uh. You know, years ago, Al will remember the, you know, like the old Hong Kong Island, you know, when Friday night, every, every car salesman on in Raytheon and all, every employee. At, you know, five, it was six o'clock on Friday night, was at the Hong Kong Island, uh, there aren't a lot of restaurants on Route one, uh, there's a couple of sandwich shops. I guess when you get down towards Walpole, there's the ninety nine and stuff, but. People come to Route one. Uh, like if you're shopping for a car, there's no real correlation that they, they stop at restaurants or anything else, uh. Manufacturing, those people go to lunch, you know, so it's. Yeah, I I'm amazed that there aren't more restaurants on that Route one stretch. Between Everett and uh, um, Sumner Street or.
Yeah, no, it's, if you look at um, the appendix with all every single parcel that's listed, it's actually kind of, it's pretty amazing to see. How high on the list some restaurants are, for example, there's a Burger King, which is. You know, I'm sure all of us have driven by a thousand times, but it actually generates a lot of money for the town. Um, trying to, I would have loved to try to figure out, you know, what type of impact all of the employees from. Uh, the auto sales industry have on, let's, like, for your example, um, eating out of restaurants. Or, you know, doing other chores or um tasks on route one, but. Um, I think, I think if we want to do that, I think we would need to hire an actual economist to do that, I don't think I'm, I'm quite there.
That's fine, we'll forgive you.
Can't be flipping burgers and counting at the same time.
That's right, good job, this. Lot of numbers.
And very nice presentation, really quite comprehensive.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no more questions, we'll move along on our agenda. Discussion on the virtual town meeting, Mr. Halkiotis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and uh, Happy New Year to all of you. Um. I wanted to just briefly on what's going on for the planned uh special town meeting coming up on February fourth. Um, following our last meeting, um, where we had a. But wasn't, might not have been our last meeting, we had a discussion about open lot storage, um. So Actman David Hajar had uh emailed me over some alternative language for the footnote. That would be on that table for the open art storage article, um, and his alternative, um. Uh, footnote was, was well written, and so I wanted to. To throw that out to the board to see if you would like to go with um that alternative as opposed to what we had discussed at the hearing. The reason why I'm bringing it up now is that the, the warrant is going to be, you know, finalized and published prior to our public hearing scheduled for. Uh, January twenty fifth, and so the, the window of opportunity to kind of swap that out is going to close. Unless we wanted to discuss it at the public hearing on the twenty fifth and then make a change on the floor of town meeting.
I, I read that, Paul, and I, I agree with the way he spoke with it and going with the positive approach to this. As opposed to negative, I, I think it's very well written and that, I think we should. Kick it around here and maybe even tonight decide what we want to do. Anybody have any objection to that? Okay. Paul?
Pat, can you, can you kind of show both versions on the screen and, and we'll, we'll do a little poll?
This is selectmen Hajar's version, uh, Paul was, was it the second option he sent or the first for option?
So, um. In red, if you scroll down below, in red is what I had written for the footnote. And then, um, if you go back to the top of the screen, can you scroll back up? Um. So uh, that's his suggestive language and, and I like the way that he put it, um, so. He's suggesting that, say, open lot vehicle storage is allowed within the Boston Providence Highway District, however. For properties within the Vanderbilt Business Park between Park Place and River Ridge Road, there must be. Property frontage at a minimum width of, and he leaves that blank. For accessibility along Boston Providence Highway Route one.
Yep, but that was just, uh, must have the frontage and the width, well, but not accessibility because you can interpret accessibility in. A dozen different ways, I see that accessibility part then was obviously dropped from his first version here.
Yeah, I think that's a good point because that could mean many different things. Um, so the alternative is, let's scroll back down, Pat, and I'll read that to everyone again. Um, the way I had drafted the, um, the footnote, it would read. Open lot vehicle storage is allowed within the Boston Providence Highway District, except for properties within Vanderbilt Business Park. Between Park Place and River Ridge Road that do not have frontage along Boston Providence Highway.
Yeah. Now, what was the, what was the second part, Paul, with the width of the? I didn't see that on the note here.
I'm not sure what, what you're asking.
I thought, I thought you had said in the second version. That there was something about the width. Maybe I misheard you. But I, that number fourteen in red. That's what we, we want to go with, correct?
Yeah, that's the way, that's the way I had proposed it.
Okay.
And, and that's what we discussed at the hearing, and then that other version at the top of the um email. In bold is, is um David suggested alternative language. So I'm, you can say the same thing several different ways, and this is an example of that, and since he proposed a, a clearly well-written. Alternative, I just wanted to run that by the board, see if you'd like to go with, with that version as opposed to what I have.
Paul, I, I, it does the word and, and go into what Al had said ear- uh, earlier about the word. Assess accessibility, um. You know, a good lawyer can take that and, and. Uh, you know, run with it, um. But I think putting in the minimum width of, of, of footage. Uh, you know, if you don't put the, if you don't have that minimum width. Number in there, accessibility could be a driveway. Do you know what I mean? Exactly, well, I got, I have, you know, I, I have access, I got a, I got a, I'm putting a private road in. You know, it is to get me back to my property, um. So I think that the, we got to come up with that minimum, does the word accessibility cause any issues, Paul, in, in your mind?
To delete it?
It, it, it can mean different things, and so what I think, I want to make sure I understand what the concern is. Our concern is that we don't want to have a piece of property um that only has twenty feet of frontage on Route one. To use that frontage to provide a driveway or an access road to an open lot storage lot. That's, that's the concern?
My concern, yes.
Okay.
I mean, I understand it out there, is, is that, is that a legitimate concern, I guess?
I, I think it definitely is because that's, that's something that could be done though, to build a little subdivision road, even to, even the driveway. To get to backland within the park, um, and if it's a big enough lot or lot, lots were assembled together to create a large lot, it could. Uh, uh, be used to provide access to a large open lot storage lot, and that's, that's not what the board wanted to see happen. So, um, I think we should throw a number in, um, a minimum width of. And, you know, we could put a hundred feet or a hundred and fifty feet, um. And just leave it at that with a period after, um, you know, or delete the word accessibility. With a minimum width of and, and insert a, a larger number, um. And, and delete for accessibility along Boston Providence Highway, delete the accessibility part.
Paul, can I throw a hypothetical at you? If someone had a big enough lot, could they possibly do an A and R? Use the back parcel, set one owner, two parcels, one on Route one, one behind it. Could they, and could they use that? Can they cross over parcel A to get the parcel B in the back?
Yeah, I think that that could be done.
Oaksway would be a prime example of that in the front, Ernie, and then behind it is that lot for. That they're using for storage and that type of stuff of motor vehicles also. Now, I don't know if that's on two separate parcels.
Well, I know they have that back lot that they can come around through. By the old home, you know, home quarters there to get into it, but I just wondered, Paul, if that's another. I mean, could somebody A and R it and, and then say, well, I'm going to use, I own both lots, I'm going to give it right away to get to the back lot, I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there.
Yeah, that could happen, and, and in Vanderbilt Park, there are two major property owners, there's more than two owners. But there's two that own substantial holdings and, um, you know, that, that, that does raise the possibility that they could combine or assemble lots. And so long there was, so long as there was a, um, a lot that had frontage on Route one. Somebody could add to it, like you said, and then um create space for more of a lot storage. Um, but I mean, this isn't, you know, it's possible, but who knows what would happen?
Yeah.
And that's where you're looking to put the minimum with in, Paul?
Yeah, and David left that blank, and so I would, I would go with a bigger number than a smaller number, um, for, uh, for that to help to try to. At, at a minimum, prevent the idea of just an access road or a driveway leading to the back.
Thank you. Anybody else? So Paul, do you want to try to hit a? Hit another draft on that and get it out to us and we'll get back to you before the meeting, or how would you like to handle it?
If, if the board can, can take care of this now, that would be the best because I think the warrant is, is being finalized and it's going to be mailed out to town meeting members. Um, if you want to think about it and try to get back to me, you know, within a day or so, that would, that would work too, but I think we don't have a lot of time.
How about now, Paul?
All right.
I mean, I guess I, I, I'm good with the uh. David's first part, maybe with uh. Maybe taking the, I don't know, if, if we put a wide number in there, say you put a hundred feet. Do you have, do you have to put for accessibility? Um. The word accessibility, I don't know, but if you put a, a width of a hundred feet, I don't know, is that enough? Should be a hundred fifty on Route one, maybe? I don't know what the minimum frontage is on Route one.
Depends on what zone it's in, right?
Yeah, well, what's it going to be in the new zone, I guess is the question.
I think that's what we want to.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at now.
Because if the whole thing changes to the new zone.
Hold on, let me take a look.
Because so many are grandfathered.
Yeah, exactly, Ernie.
Yeah, so the minimum lot frontage in the new Boston Providence Highway District would be a hundred feet if it's approved. So I think.
So then I would throw a hundred feet in there?
Yeah, put a hundred feet in there, um, and. And just delete the words for accessibility, so it would read frontage at a minimum width of a hundred feet along Boston Providence Highway.
And could that be waived, Paul, if somebody came and said, look, I got ninety five feet, I was under the old program, I got, you know, ninety feet? I mean, is that a waivable, uh, the frontage?
That could be, um, a variance could be issued by the zoning board.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll, I'll. I'll, I'll let the other board member speak on it and then I'll make a motion.
I'm good with the hundred feet. And the other, I added the portions that we talked about.
I agree, hundred feet at a minimum.
Joshine, you out there? Mr. Bamber?
Yeah, um. Yeah, I'm okay with the hundred feet, uh, it's, it's a very interesting, uh. You know, what if situation, but I'm okay with it.
Yeah, if we're concerned and this we hear it has to be worth, worst case, it would be a Board of Appeals decision, but not as a matter of right. So. So Paul, are you good?
That's good, that helps me, um, we'll, we'll swap that footnote out, make sure that gets in the warrant, and um, I think that's a good decision.
Mr. Hajar, please?
Yep.
Thank you. Patrick, thank you.
All right, so next, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just give you a little bit of brief update on what's going on with the special town meeting. And um, then I just have a few updates from the department to kind of wrap things up for tonight. Um, the selectmen have set a virtual town meeting scheduled for February fourth. Um, they've contracted with MAPC to help run the special town meeting. MAPC has done this already for the towns of Stoughton and Dedham at their town meetings. And um, apparently they went fairly smoothly. MAPC's al- also held large Zoom meetings with over two hundred people. For um, their biannual meetings, and I've attended both of those, um, one in the spring and then one in the fall. Um, and the meetings went remarkably well, considering how many people were there, um. Unfortunately, they need to run the meeting on Zoom. Software as opposed to go to meeting, and that means um, all of us need to get. Up to speed with the intricacies of some different software other than what we've been using here for our planning board meetings. Um, they're going to, MAPC is going to offer, um, I think, three training sessions. Um, there'll also be kind of like a helpline, I think there will also be a place. That people, town meeting members could come to if they don't have a computer. And, and, and need assistance to participate in town meeting, so um, we've had. I think four or five meetings so far with the moderator, selectmen, Tony Mazuko, IT. Um, and others to discuss how the Zoom meeting will work. Um, what, what we need to, to understand and what to do and not to do. Um, and so there was this, there was, I was at a meeting this afternoon and there's another one scheduled, I think, for Friday. Where we're going to continue um, learning how to use Zoom and, and how the meeting will participate. How the moderator will call on people for questions, our votes will be taken and so forth. Um, there is an informational meeting scheduled, the first one for January eighteenth at five PM. And anybody interested should um, check the town website for um, for details on that and to, to get a link to that meeting. Um. Everybody's going to need to download the Zoom software to make it, make it all work, and so. We're in the process of a big kind of edu- educational effort with town meeting members. Um, the first step was to obtain the email address. Um, the first step was to obtain the email addresses of all town meeting members. And, um, in some cases, I think there was a small handful of people that, that didn't have email addresses. Um, but at this point, I think they have over two hundred of them and they're kind of closing in on the, the remainder, remaining fifty that, that they need reaching out to those people. Um, letters have been sent out to town meeting members explaining this, and folks should have received those in the mail already. Pat and I have been finalizing our PowerPoint presentations. And, um, we're going to do it a little bit differently where I'm going to be recording my voice along with the PowerPoint presentation with each slide. And what this will mean for me is that I don't have to do the presentation live. I, I can take my time and try to clearly get that message out on the, on the slides. Um, but after, um, that, that recording is, is played for town meeting members, I'll be standing by. Pat and I will be there to answer any questions except comments on, um, on the proposed zoning changes. Just like every other town meeting, we're going to need to have written motions. They're going to need to be signed and, um, I'm going to need to have a board member, um, um, make the motion and another board member to second it. And that's usually Ernie that makes motions for us and Joe seconds. Um, I'll catch up with Joe, but if that's a, a game plan that, uh, that the board acceptable to the board, uh, the motion has to be made by a town meeting member and, and they're two of our board members that are town meeting members. We traditionally have the chairman give the report of the planning board. And that's a, a short statement that, um, is required under the State Zoning Act for any zoning map or bylaw amendments. It, it, the statement basically says that we held a public hearing, which is required under the State Zoning Act. It, it explains how many people attended the hearing, how many people, um, commented or spoke for or against a zoning article. Um, and then it concludes with the planning board's recommendation. And, and the key piece here is that any zoning amendments in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the planning boards required to, um, make a recommendation, um, to support or oppose any, any zoning map or bylaw amendments. Um, we already have the, uh, planning board reports, I already wrote them for the November town meeting. But since we have to reschedule, rehold those ti- uh, public hearings on January twenty-fifth, um, I'll go in and just change the dates. Um, I've got draft motions that I'll, I'll need to run by Tom Council. Make sure he's, he's okay with that and then I can send them out to Ernie and Joe. And we can go through the mechanics of getting those signed and into the hands of the moderator um, in time for, uh, for town meeting. Um, that's about all I have for the, 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 the special town meeting. I'll stop at this point and, and answer any questions the board members might have.
Well, how do we get a count on those who are attending the, the open, the hearing? Um.
Our public hearings?
Yeah.
So, um, if you actually look at the top of your screen right now, on the right side, you'll see the little gear. You'll see the little caption to make, to chat, and on the left it says nine. So that tells us there are nine people attending this meeting. Our meetings are also recorded. If you go all the way over to the left side of the screen, you can see the red, the red box, we're being recorded. We can always go back and, and check records and things like that.
Okay, so that's statistical information for the.
Sometimes the way that happens, I call Pat and I say, how many people were at that hearing, Pat? He tells me.
Digital.
So, um, we are, we're finalizing the, the presentations and, and, um, trying to educate ourselves on using Zoom and, and being involved with, with getting ready for town meeting. And, um, that's, you know, that's pretty much what, most of what we're spending our time on the last week or two.
And there's a lot of work to be done.
Um, in terms of updates, the, um, the zoning board appeals, uh, voted to approve the U A V E application for the, um, the, the gravel mining. Um, they're finalizing their, uh, decision. They have, um, included some of the recommended commission, conditions of approval that, that I suggested and that Mark Ryan suggested. Uh, that project will, um, will need a special, uh, will need a site plan approval from the planning board. And so we anticipate that they will be, um, um, submitting an application package to us, uh, in the near future. However, there, there is a chance, as there is with every special permit, that it could be appealed. And, um, if it is appealed, we'll need to talk to town council about what we should do next, whether we can move forward with, with entertaining an application during an appeal. Um, if there's no appeal, then, you know, we just go forward with hearing that case. So that's one of the projects that I think we're going to see coming along, um, this year. Um, right before, uh, the holidays, Tony Mazuko closed the, uh, the town hall until January nineteenth. And so as far as we know right now, um, it's, the building is still close to the public. It will be until the nineteenth. There's a chance that that might get extended, I guess, but we'll have to kind of wait and see. Um, important piece of news, the, the state passed, uh, state legislature passed, um, the economic development bond bill. And included in that bond bill was, um, the housing choice, uh, legislation that the governor's been trying to get, um, approved for two or three years now. There is a, an opt-in pro- program, a housing choice program. And, and we didn't, we didn't, um, um, discuss, uh, enter opting into that. But at this point now, there's legislation that, um, will change in, in, in some big ways how zoning works in Massachusetts. It's, it's a long, um, um, law and we are waiting for some of our, um, our peers, our professional organizations to, um, come up with a Reader's Digest version of what the law says. Um, and I'm sure there's going to be some webinars and some education out there for, for the planners to understand the intricacies of this new law. The law does charge D H C D with coming up with, um, operating regulations. So there's some big blanks there about how everything will work until D H C D promulgates some regulations. But the important thing that we understand this legislation includes is that for all communities that have MBTA stations, they're going to need to identify geographic areas on the map near the T stations that show where multifamily housing will be allowed by right. Um, that's one of the, the hooks to this legislation that, um, I think is going to get a lot of attention. It's definitely going to be controversial. Um, Pat and I were discussing it and, and one of the questions we have right now is, do we need to establish more than one of these districts in, in town? Or do we need to establish one for every T station and we have three train stations? So as you can imagine, this is going to be a controversial exercise. Um, I've made recommendations in the past that the town create a housing partnership committee. Um, these are committees that the state recommends communities, uh, create. And many cities and towns have them. I actually served on one in the late nineteen eighties. So this isn't a new program. Um, and I work closely with the housing partnership here in Marshfield and, and we, we got some good things done. Um, and so in the past, I've recommended that we create such a committee. Town of Norwood, um, really, um, got involved with some serious controversy because the town had not been proactive in creating affordable housing to get to that ten percent. Um, and so, uh, a housing partnership committee would get involved with a lot of different things in, in, in affordable housing. They would try to do education and outreach. Um, uh, they would be involved with reviewing affordable housing projects and making recommendations. Um, and so this is a recommendation that I've, I've, uh, provided to the general manager so that, uh, when we have to go through this exercise of identifying with our, the marker in one hand and the map, where is this area going to be? It's not going to be a planning director decision. It will be a community decision. The decision needs to be discussed and debated amongst the community. And I think it would be helpful if there was a committee that was focusing on, on housing related issues to undertake that task and, and, uh, one way or the other, I think Pat and I will be involved with, um, um, uh, this issue, whether it's, uh, helping to staff a committee um, and providing information to them. Or, um, if we end up doing it without a committee, guess who's going to get involved with this? The planning board and, and, and us. So, um, that's going to be some more excitement coming down the pike in twenty twenty-one for us. Um, the last thing that I wanted to, um, to just brief you on is that we've started, um, a new procedure for the land use departments. Um, Tony Mazuko, uh, contacted us and said that he'd like to set up monthly meetings with staff from the Board of Appeals, Conservation, Planning and the Building Department. And so we had our first meeting, uh, last week. It was very productive. We exchanged a lot of information. And, um, that's the goal of the meeting, um, to try to improve, uh, uh, our communication and coordination between us. This has become all that more difficult now that, you know, the, in, in the situation that we've been in with the pandemic where, um, I haven't been in the building for months. And, and, um, there's a lot of conversation that takes place in the hallways, uh, um, passing, you know, our coworkers. And, and a lot of that has been lost recently. And it's, that's not the case just with us, but with, with all companies, the kind of synergy that takes place when employees informally talk about different issues and ideas. Um, that really has slowed down quite a bit. And so, um, for a lot of reasons, Tony's initiated, um, these meetings. It's something that other towns do to have their land use departments, um, communicating and coordinating. And I think it's going to be, um, a positive thing for us going forward. Be glad to answer, um, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Be glad to answer any questions board members might have.
Paul, have a, I see lights on in the, uh, hospital and appears some construction lighting is being hung in the areas. Have we gotten any indication from the hospital what they're going to do or what they've started to do?
I haven't heard anything. I sent the medical services overweight district bylaw to the president of the hospital. And I received no response. I asked Tony if he's had conversations with him and he said there hasn't been a lot of communication. And that was last week, I think I asked Tony. So right now, we don't have much to go with. We don't know whether this bylaw amendment that was drafted kind of on their behalf, whether it's good or bad or whether there's issues. But, but I, I reached out and I did my job trying to, um, uh, communicate with the hospital president about the proposed zoning bylaw amendment. And, and hopefully, uh, at some point, somebody's going to respond. But, um, the ability to make any changes to that is, is, that window's going to shut fairly soon.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions for the director or the assistant director?
I just have a quick question, guys. This is Jeff Sullivan from the record. Um, Paul, when you said the hearing on the twenty-fifth, uh, is that, what, what specifically is that in regards to?
Thanks, Jeff. Um, so, you know, as I mentioned, we've already held all of our, our, uh, public hearings for the zoning amendments. And we did that in October, um, hoping that we were going to get, get, uh, a November town meeting and take care of these. Apparently, um, at the November eleventh town meeting, there was a vote to dissolve that special town meeting. So it meant that that town meeting ended. Town council has advised us to redo those public hearings just to make sure that we're following the letter of the law. And so we have scheduled, um, uh, public hearings for each of the six zoning amendments for our next meeting on January twenty-fifth.
All right, thank you very much. So I just want to make sure I, I knew what you guys are talking about.
Okay.
Anything else? I'll entertain a motion to close this evening's meeting.
So moved.
And a second? Got a second, Mr. Hatchey?
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay, we got, got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion. For the record. The Hatchey.
Aye.
Hatchikowski.
Aye.
Mr. Bamber?
Aye.
Mr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Porro is an aye also, five, nothing. Thank you very much, everyone. Good night.